This is a special voting meeting to certify the results of Tuesday, May seventeenth selection. It is six thirty-four on May eighteenth, and we have two resolutions on the docket for tonight. But first is obviously the most important is certify the election results. They are as you see them, and unless an administrator says something needs to be changed, I will move, certainly have someone move it. And second, and then we can ask any questions if we wish, but let's move forward.
In order to make sure we have conversation, I move resolution or agenda item two point one, a resolution to confirm the results of the two thousand twenty-two annual meeting and budget vote.
Second.
My Moira, any comments other than congratulations team? The budget did pass with over sixty percent and close to seventy percent, I believe. Dr. Brown, and if any details you want to share, fine, but.
Just a special thank you to our community for supporting us. This budget puts us in great position to support young people and our staff for the in the near future. So, thank you.
So we are two for two now, Dr. Brown, with overriding the tax lady limit. We'll see what happens in the future, but. But for now, we'll, we'll, we'll thank the community. Anything else?
Are, are we about to vote right now? Is that what's next?
That is the motion on the floor, yes.
Are we going to at all talk about the legality regarding the vote giving all the inconsistencies and inaccuracies?
This would be a time to do that.
So I would like to talk about that. I know that there were folks turned away. There were signs up that were not accurate. So before I can vote, I need to know that. The election is in void, given everything that happened. I personally feel like maybe it wasn't intentional, but there was voter suppression in terms of folks not being able to vote. Folks feeling like they didn't, they were not able to vote for the folks that they wanted to vote for, given that some sign said three people versus four people. So wanting clarification there.
So Mr. and Mr. It was a, I know there's a statement on our website that outlines details about what happened yesterday and, and questions that we received in our office again. So the talking points are there and our direct folks to look at those statements. There was a clerical error that resulted in signs being placed up at several polling stations that were taken down shortly thereafter. Once we were alerted to the fact that they were errors, signs that stated that one could vote for three people instead of four. The other issue is around a particular candidate for the Board of Election and us learning of a school district, district clerk learning about a residency question and the process we went through to verify that particular candidate's residency and what was shared with the school district and when and why the statements about withdrawing were placed up and then why they were corrected. So this, the details as we know them and as we've investigated are online for folks to see. And I will, I, I don't know if it'd be best for me to answer those questions or a board member or either our legal counsel to answer specific questions from members of the board at this time. But the details are there and I can reiterate what's on the website if needed.
Dr. Brown, is Kate on the line right now to be able to walk us through those, the legality of everything in terms of legal counsel?
That I'm unsure, I'm unable to see. Trishawn, Trishawn, do you see?
Kate is. I'm here, Dr. Brown, I don't see Kate on. Take a look. I don't see her on.
I, I think I want to ask a question that Nicole raised differently regarding the legality of the election and the votes and. One, is it valid? And two, if it were not, what would be the steps if we know them? I guess for clarification for the public. Because from what I understand, and I don't claim to be the expert in this, we as the Board of Education don't oversee the operations of the election process and it would have to go to the Commissioner in order to review this. If someone can help me with that, or maybe we'd have to go to Kate.
Yeah, I, I can share that our legal representation has shared with us that the election is completely valid and there are no concerns from our, the school district's attorney's perspective that there are issues that need to go to the Commissioner or any issues around the invalidation of this particular election in process.
What about though, because this isn't on the statement on the website, but from what I understand, at least one location ran out of ballots, so people were turned away. So I, how is an election valid if that happened? And, and why is that not on the website?
Yeah. That will be new information from, to me. And our legal counsel has not advised me of that at all and I, yeah.
Uh, just two things. One, I, I would like to stress that if, if board members seem, you know, reticent in speaking, it's because of what Chris just said. We do not oversee the elections. It, as I understand, nor does central administration oversee the election. As I understand it, it's the board clerk in consultation with the Board of Elections. If, if I'm wrong about that or that needs amplification, you know, somebody should say. So that's, you know, one of the things that has made me reticent to jump in um, is because of that, you know, this is not something that we, we run. In addition, as to what I know about running out of ballots, when I went to vote yesterday evening at LACS, they told me that they had at one point run out of ballots, but they also told me that everybody who was there uh, who, when it was, but when they were, they had no ballots, returned to vote later and that they got the ballots within fifteen minutes. That's what the election uh, super officials at the poll told me yesterday at six.
Good folks, I know that we have Kate on the line who only has a few minutes, probably for other school board meetings as well. So why don't we ask Kate the direct questions while we have Kate available? Kate, are you able to unmute as well? So if there's any school board member that has a specific question or can you repeat your question? So our legal counsel can hear it and respond.
Good evening, everybody. How are we tonight?
Stress, Kate, I'm stressed. I'll speak for myself. How are you? It's always lovely to see you.
Lovely to see you as always, Nicole. I know that this week is the most stressful for the school board every year, and I'm sorry that it's been no exception this year and has been a very stressful couple of days. So hopefully I can answer your questions quick here to set everybody's minds at ease and allow everybody to move on with confidence with the, the declaration of tonight's election result. So Sean, were there specific questions or did you want me to cover any particular topic or what? What's the agenda?
I'll leave it to my colleagues to ask the questions that they need to have answered.
Great.
I've talked a lot. I want to be aware of taking up space. So does anyone have any questions before I ask Kate a question?
Nicole, go ahead and repeat what you, what you're.
So Kate, my, my concerns are that there were, I, I, I'm concerned if, if this election is valid, given that we had folks who showed up to the polls yesterday who saw signs inaccurate regarding how many people they could vote for. So there is Rob, for example, who may have had more votes, but maybe did not because people were told that you could only vote for three people. I'm worried about the signs that said that Ben was, um, he had withdrew, but he did not. We all know whatever, whatever happened, but there were also people that were turned away because there were no more ballots. There were people who returned to the polls who wanted to vote for four people, wanted to vote again because they now had new information. So I'm concerned about the inaccuracies there and certifying a ballot that I'm not sure I feel comfortable validating, given everything that happened yesterday.
Those are all very valid concerns, Nicole, and I think that I'll, I'll try to address each of them sequentially and, you know, concretely and sequentially, so we can take each of the issues separately. So our first issue is with regard to the erroneous sign that was posted that stated that, that there were three, that people should vote for three candidates. My understanding of that was that that was actually a sign that was utilized from last year accidentally. It was a clerical mistake, so to speak. Is that enough to overthrow the election? I, I can't tell you with certainty because I did some research over the past twenty-four hours and there is no directly analogous case on point. I can tell you anecdotally that I handled an appeal for the Skinny Atlas Central School District last year that involved some similar facts, which I shared with Dr. Eversley Bradwell earlier today in which there was a situation where the board published that board member, that, that voters had to vote for three candidates. Now, in fact, we all know that's incorrect. You can bullet vote, right? What they should have said was vote for up to three candidates, not three candidates. There was an appeal that ensued as a result of people saying we were confused. We didn't realize we could vote for just one or two and that we didn't have to vote for three. And as a result, our will was thwarted, so to speak. We handled that appeal and the Commissioner determined that there was no evidence that that confusion had actually impacted the election in a way that warranted setting aside the election. What the Commissioner looks like, looks at when she receives an election challenge is not simply was there an irregularity, but was that irregularity actually causally connected to some kind of negative outcome in the election that actually thwarted the will of the voters? Such that we can't discern the will of the voters. Is this different than that situation? Yes, I can see an argument being made that because we said three and not four, there are people that, for instance, would have voted for Rob and did not vote for Rob because they didn't realize they had four votes. There are certain factors, and I know we haven't done a complete investigation or postmortem of the situation yet. So I say this with several disclaimers, Nicole, but what I would say is there's several facts so far that have come to light that lead me to believe that the Commissioner likely would not set aside the election based on this, this error. The first is that the period of time in which the erroneous sides were actually displayed was reasonably limited. So my understanding is that the maximum period of time that any irregular sign was displayed was a maximum of two hours at any polling site. In some instances, it was even less. So voters would have to establish that, you know, there was sufficient confusion during that window of time that impacted the final vote tally. Given how brief the period of time was, I find that unlikely. Secondarily, the ballot was correct. So the ballot, when you actually received the ballot, it said vote for up to four, which is the correct information. So anyone who received the ballot would have had the actual correct information. I think the Commissioner, based on her prior rulings, would likely look at that and say, even though there was initially some erroneous information conferred, the, the information was then corrected by the board in the form of a corrected ballot. The, the ballot was correct, so to speak. So all to say, I can't, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't tell you exactly what the Commissioner was that I was certainly personally, you know, very upset by that development when I learned that those posters have been posted because I can a hundred percent appreciate as a taxpayer and a voter, why people would have been confused. And the best we can say, and I said this to Doctors Eversley Bradwell earlier today, so I, I apologize for the repetition to him. But what I will say is, you know, the school board is human, right? This, this, this election's being run by human beings, by people largely, you know, retirees who are coming out to help us with this. And there's a margin of human error involved in that because of every election. There was no intentional attempt to, you know, disenfranchise voters here. This was a minor oversight and an oversight that in the grand scheme of the election and given the enormous spread between the candidates is unlikely to result, I believe, in the election being set aside. So that's the issue with the poster. Issue number two, Mr., now I'm going to draw a name on a blank on his name because I do confess I haven't slept much the last two days. So I appreciate everybody's patience, but Benjamin, our friend Benjamin. So Benjamin is not eligible for school board. Now, what happened with Mr. Mumford Zisk was that we only discovered very late in the game that he had only relocated to Ithaca in February. As a result, we could not correct the ballot in order to inform people of, you know, exactly what was, of the fact that he was ineligible, because it was too late. Ballots had already been printed. So a judgment call was made in consultation with myself and Dr. Brown and the entire administrative team. You know, to examine what we could do about the fact that that individual was not in fact eligible to run for school board. And the risk, of course, of letting voters move forward and vote for him without disclosing that he was not eligible is a circumventing of the democratic process, because he would have then been elected but not able to actually take the seat, which then it would have reverted to the school board to appoint a candidate of their choice, which would be actually anti-democratic. So when we discussed it as a team, the decision was made, it is better to communicate to the public that this individual is not eligible, as opposed to having several people vote for him and then have a position that's essentially a lame duck that we can't appoint. So that was the judgment call that was made. We also believed in, with respect to Mr. Mumford Zisk, that we should reach out to him, inform him of the fact that he would be ineligible if appointed and give him the opportunity to withdraw. My colleague, my co-chair of, of our practice group, reached out to him just before noon yesterday and shared those options with him and basically said, we want to give you the courtesy of letting you withdraw your candidacy as opposed to broadcasting that you're simply not eligible for the seat. He actually, during the conversation, agreed with her analysis and represented to her that he was withdrawing his candidacy. That was the basis for us to then place the signs at the polling sites stating that he had withdrawn because he represented to us that he was withdrawn. Later on, he changed his mind. At about three thirty, I received a call from an attorney for NISIT indicating that she was following the situation closely in Ithaca and that Mr. Mumford Zisk had reassessed and that he was not planning, in fact, to withdraw his candidacy. At that point, again, we reached out to Dr. Brown and said, we need to make a judgment call. Should we change the sign? And the conclusion was yes, because the sign is materially inaccurate at this point. He is not withdrawn, he's simply ineligible. As a result, a replacement sign was then placed at each of the poll sites, reflecting the accurate information. So that's how it all came out in real time. You know, I've, I've read the news coverage, obviously, we all have, saying that this was, you know, there was widespread confusion. I understand the circumstances of this situation resulted in confusion, but I hope that this explanation is sufficient to help everybody understand that these situations roll out in real time and we always have to make the judgment call of what is going to cause the least voter confusion and what is going to result in the will of the voters being expressed. Mr. Mumford Zisk, had he been elected, we could not appoint him to the board. He is ineligible. So that would have been, again, a circumvention of the democratic process, in my opinion. And had we not provided the disclosure, I think that would have been potentially an appeal to the Commissioner that would have been sustained. The Commissioner would have said, you were aware of this information, you should have advised people that they were essentially throwing their votes away. So that's why the decision was made. I don't believe that anything pertaining to the situation involving Mr. Mumford Zisk is a basis for setting aside the election, invalidating the election. I understand it was confusing, but I don't believe that it should stand as any bar to this board declaring the result of, of an otherwise lawful election. I do have concern, as I stated, regarding the posters. I understand voters were confused by that. It was a clerical error, as I understand it. But, you know, I, I think at the end of the day, the likelihood that that clerical error had a causal impact on the outcome of the election, when we had the kind of spread between the candidates that we saw, that's going to be a hard case for somebody to make. It's a case that the, you know, that the board, it's not the board's place to make that case. A taxpayer could make the case. I, I don't know if Dr. Eversley Bradwell already reported, but I did speak with NISIT Council tonight and they advised me that having reviewed the situation, they're not prepared to proceed with any kind of legal proceeding to challenge the election. So, you know, I don't want to read too much into that or insinuate anything, but it is what it is. You know, they're not prepared to move forward with any kind of lawsuit or challenge. So that being the case, I think the likelihood of a challenge here is slim. And then finally, what I'll end with, because I know I have been talking a long time, folks, and I want to give you the opportunity for questions and Nicole's questions were very thoughtful. So I want to make sure we're, we're really appreciating that. But the other thing I want to add is that the education law is mandatory and not permissive when it comes to the declaration of the result of the vote. Ithaca City School District is a small city school district. It, your obligations as board members are clearly delineated in the education law under the Small City School Districts Act. And that act provides that at, before eight PM, the day after the budget vote, the board shall certify the election results and declare the winner. So I do not believe that we have a legal option for simply not declaring the result of the vote. I believe that's the board's obligation. We have to do that now, not to say that Mr. Zisk, Mumford Zisk, or some taxpayer may not have a challenge to the election. We've had challenges before, we've dealt with legal proceedings before. We'll deal with that legal proceeding if it's brought, you know, it may be the case that the board would not even contest, you know, if that legal proceeding is brought. But at this juncture point, I think our option is simply to declare the result of the election and, and, and that is what it is. So I don't know, I hope I answered some of your questions, Nicole. I'm, I'm happy to give somebody else the floor now. I know I've been hogging the floor for quite a while.
Kate, I, I have a question about the signage regarding Ben, because, I mean, as a longtime voter, as someone who covered this in her profession, that was unprecedented to me and it really shocked me to walk it outside the polling site, but inside the polling site and then in the ballot box. And I say this because electioneering precedent set that you leave the name on the ballot. If someone dies, you leave the name on the ballot. That person is then declared ineligible at that time. And then the next person with the most votes would then take the seat. So it just, it, it really threw me off as a voter, as a political science person, to see how Ben's situation was handled. Can you explain? I, I just don't, like, I have literally never seen anything like that before.
There is no, in the education law, there is no precedent for precisely what happened tonight or last night, I should say, because typically what happens is that we are required, and this is different than in other sorts of elections. In school board elections, we're required to vet the residency of a candidate and if they are ineligible, to not put them on the ballot. The problem in this situation was that we did not discover he was ineligible until after the ballots had been printed and it was too late to actually rectify the problem, right? That was the issue. So we were then faced with a conundrum and that is not addressed in either the education law or in the Commissioner's decisions, which is what is more likely to result in voter confusion? Do we have everybody vote and then find out that their vote was meaningless because he cannot take the seat? And as a result, the board gets to choose the candidate? That to me struck me as very non-democratic, that that would result in greater voter confusion. It would result in a situation where potentially voters would say, if Ithaca City School District was aware as of the morning of the, of the budget vote, that this individual was not eligible. Why did they not tell us? Why were they not transparent? Were they engineering a situation where they would then invalidate him and then select their own candidate? That to me is a much higher likelihood of, of a challenge than the course of action that was taken, which was to advise the public that he is ineligible. Now, initially, we advised that he had withdrawn. The education law is clear that if a candidate withdraws, we are to direct the public that they can't vote for that individual because he has withdrawn. Our initial supposition, based on what he told us, was that he had withdrawn. The only reason that that turned out to be incorrect was that he misrepresented his intentions to my partner and ultimately did not withdraw, so we had to go back and correct the signs, obviously. But the, 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 the situation is distinctive because had he been elect, had he received a plurality of the votes, we would not have been able to seat him. We would not have been legally authorized to administer the vote. Now, if that had occurred to us after the election, that's one thing, but to have it occur the morning of the election, when we could advise the voters of the situation in full transparency, we erred on the side of transparency under my advisement, that transparency was a better course of action in that situation. Does that answer your question?
I have, I have a follow-up.
Sure, Moira. And I, I do a full, full disclosure, I'm going to have to bolt momentarily too, but absolutely, Moira, go ahead.
Okay, so, you know, when you talk about vetting the residency, first of all, I, I feel strongly that people not believe that the board is responsible for vetting any candidate for the board, because that would be a conflict of interest. So what are the responsibilities of any district personnel to vet the residency? And did district personnel who were responsible fall short?
That's a great, that's an excellent question. It actually kind of touches on a very arcane provision of the education law. But the, the answer to the question of are we responsible to vet? No, nothing in the law states that we're required to conduct a residency investigation into the eligibility of every candidate who submits a nominating petition. The law does state, however, that if the board becomes aware of information that suggests that an individual is not eligible, they do have a duty within their fiduciary duty, that duty of loyalty, to investigate, review the situation and ultimately reject the nominating petition and exclude the person from the ballot if they are not eligible. This is actually distinguishable from central and union free school districts in New York State, where that duty rests with the district clerk. So in all other types of school districts, the duty is with the district clerk to investigate if information comes to their attention. In small city school districts like Ithaca, the law and the legislative history of that law is very clear that it's actually the responsibility of the Board of Education to take it upon itself to exclude a candidate from the, who, who is ineligible. So Moira, you said, you said it great, which is, you know, that would be a conflict of interest. I agree, that's the appearance of it, but sometimes, you know, the education law doesn't make a lot of sense, guys. That's the best that I can say. It's very scripted. A lot of these rules are a hundred years old. It's not intuitive. It's not, you can't shoot from the hip on it, you have to actually know the rules. And, and the rule in this case is that that is the responsibility of the Board of Education to reject a candidate who is not eligible.
But not to vet that candidate.
But not to independently vet the candidate. There are cases in which the board has been overzealous, boards have been overzealous about conducting residency investigations when there's really no facts to suggest that the person is ineligible. And the Commissioner has generally frowned upon that and said that that is improper and a overstepping by the board, which would not be proper. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you, Kate.
Thank you, Moira.
So Kate, I know you have to leave, but a quick question. You alluded to this earlier. Procedurally, if there is any contesting of this election, it not come from the board, it would come from a citizen and would go to the Commissioner, correct?
The parties that would have standing to challenge this election would be any taxpayer in your district who participated in the budget vote. The Board of Education could itself bring a petition. But, you know, that's not, that's something the board needs to obviously consider in executive session to consider its options. But the, the challenge, the only individual who has the authority to either order a revote, to recount the ballots or to re-elect would be the Commissioner of Education. Only the Commissioner of Education has standing to set aside the election. And the only people that can bring challenges to the election would be residents who voted in the election or the Board of Education itself in certain circumstances where there's been a complete failure of the democratic process. Like, for instance, a few years ago in the Greece Central School District, there was a situation where the voting machines broke in the middle of the election. So there were hundreds and hundreds of ballots unaccounted for because the, the, the voting machines actually broke. In that situation, Greece took it upon themselves to file a Commissioner's appeal to challenge the outcome of the election. But typically speaking, it would be a district resident who would challenge the outcome of the election and the Commissioner would then determine whether or not the election was valid. And what I said to Dr. Brown recently is also, I'd like the board to understand, if such a challenge is brought, we don't have to oppose it. That's something we would obviously discuss in executive session, the options, et cetera. If a taxpayer brings a challenge to set aside the election, the board would have the option about whether or not we want to oppose this, support it, or just stay neutral. And, you know, that's, that, that would be your choice. So we, just because a resident brings a, a proceeding before the Commissioner does not mean that the board has to necessarily oppose that. It would be on the other side of the V on the, on the caption, so to speak. We could take the position that we support the petitioner or that we are neutral in the matter or anything in between. So that was a great question, Chris.
Thanks, Kate. I'm sure you probably need to.
Thanks, Kate. I'm sure you probably need to, need to bounce. So well, uh. It's after the seven o'clock hour, so.
I I do, I appreciate. Percy. If if there are any remaining questions, I will be logged in, obviously, first thing in the morning. Uh, and I would be happy to answer any additional questions and also if the board ever feels the need for a special meeting or an executive session. Uh, to debrief this further, I would be happy to join that as well. So I appreciate everybody's uh, accommodating my schedule tonight. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.
I have a question. I'm not sure, Rob, Dr. Eversley Bradwell, or Tricia, or Lavelle, or Lily, if you'd be able to answer. But in terms of thinking about residency, would someone be able to speak to what that process is? Who's in charge of that process? Verifying that process. I'll clarify.
The board clerk, when there are questions, the board clerk will, it's the first one to begin the investigation. And and what we've done is um, brought in our legal counsel to ask the additional questions.
I guess let me re-ask the question. So this election season, we had seven candidates. All seven candidates came to Tricia, filled out their applications. Was Tricia's job or the board clerk's job to reach out to a lawyer and verify? Or is the board clerk's job to believe what they say when they sign it?
Yeah, let me clarify. Thank you for clarifying your question. Yes, uh, when folks hand in their petitions. We, the board clerk uh, assumes that they are uh, they are residents based on their affirmation as part of the documentation that they handed. However, when there are questions and throughout throughout my tenure here, there have been several questions over the years. That's when the board clerk begins a, an investigation. And I think. Um, Ms. Reed spoke to that in much more technical and legal terms than I just shared, but yeah, the board clerk doesn't initially do it unless there is some type of a question.
So follow up question. So the questions regarding Benjamin's residency happened the night before the day of?
From my understanding, yes, they came to the board, the board clerk um, the night before and the morning of the election. And when I say the night before, I'm talking uh, when my phone was ringing, it's around ten fifteen uh, P M. It was late.
I've continued to try to stay out of this because the board is not involved in the school district elections. Um, I did have a. A conversation with uh, Ms. Reed earlier today, just so I can get a better understanding of what was taking place and what were the. Um. Irregularities, uh, because they're concerning to all of us about the democratic process. Uh, but I also understand that um, the candidate we're talking about in particular. Uh, made mention during the candidate's forum about recently returning. And uh, there were a number of community folks who started reaching out to board members saying. I thought there was a one-year residency requirement, but during this forum that there was a comment about recently returning. Um, and so that's what I think partly happened as well. I got a phone call on Monday and I said, I have no clue. Um, it's not my job. It's not my role. I don't understand. People were asking for clarification about what the residency requirement is. Um, and so that's, that's my understanding of what took place.
The information regarding what it's, well. I have it right here. It is. It's right in the, it's in the packet. Uh, board member qualification to eligibility. Um, and bullet number three must, must be and have been a legal resident of the district domicile in the district for a continuous uninterrupted. Period of at least one year immediately prior to the election. It's on the front page of, if you picked up a board packet, it is right there. The fact that someone perhaps did not read it, uh, which perhaps was the case, that's um. That's not the board clerk's obligation is to have you sit, stand there and read it. So. Uh, you take the packet, you take it home and you get your signatures and you submit them. But it is, it is one of the stated requirements right on the front page. Bullet number three, you have to be a resident continuously in the district for at least one year prior to the election.
Um, I think. Just in light of trying to move things forward, but also being candid, you know, our ultimate goal with any of these um. Election proceedings is for them to go smoothly without any hiccup. Um, they're a stressful time. There are a lot of different hands and it's also something that only happens once a year. Um, and you know. We are extremely apologetic to the public and to our taxpayers for what they've gone through and and really, we understand that this was a mess. Um, but we also understand and recognize that mistakes do happen and. We are doing this in part in process to clarify a lot of these um, things that are out there. In the media or things that are going on in social media, which is very dangerous in my opinion, but that's just me. Um, and so what I will also do, if anyone has any other questions, feel free to reach out to the board. Um, to the administrators and we can help clarify this where we can. Um, and I think if anyone has any other questions, and I'm not trying to silence anyone, but I am trying to really put it in context where I can.
Chris, I would also add that the last time that, well, the the first time that we actually chose to override. The uh, tax levy limit uh, turnout was very heavy. Um, there were multiple trips from the administration building throughout the district. Um, I remember. Heading out to Bell Sherman to see that ballots were delivered. Uh, the end date and time of the election was extended. Uh, because we had folks lined up at Bell Sherman and other areas after nine o'clock and it took, I think, almost till ten o'clock. To go through all the ballots. This is um, it's, yeah, so that's um. It it doesn't happen all the time, but when uh, voter turnout really exceeds what uh, is the normal. Um, which is great. Folks came out and um, but there was a need to keep pushing ballots out. And I think there was still, we don't create the ballots, right? So it's. Um, so ballots had to be pushed out to a variety of spots in the district that time. Um. Only if that's helpful reminder. And we still have a motion and second on the table.
I think it was moved by Sean. I'm not sure who seconded. Moira, sorry, Moira.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's right. It's on the table. It's, you know, we've just been, been in discussion phase here. So you have not called the question yet.
Right, and I want folks to know that I moved it to make sure that we could have the conversation. Like, I'm sure all my colleagues, I have been processing, thinking on the phone, email all day long, trying to understand exactly what happened. Uh, realizing how we got here, what are the options moving forward? Um, and uh, it's been um, quite a day trying to understand where we're at. What I take away from Kate is that, yes, there um, the signs that said vote for three and not four uh, is a, is an error. It it, we, we have to, we acknowledge that. Um, and there still are questions about, let me rephrase it differently. Kate's understanding is that that may not be enough to challenge the election, given the the spread. That's where I sort of land at, um, realizing that that's the reason why we have a nine-member board so we can each. Express our opinion and what should happen moving forward.
We do have an obligation per Kate's comments that we have until eight o'clock.
Moira, you're muted.
Yeah, I was gonna say what Rob just said, that according to Kate, we have an obligation and. As I understood what Kate said, there's no reason for us not to fulfill the. Obligation to certify the election by eight o'clock.
Unless I hear some, some comments, um, I'll call a question, then call a roll, but speak now. We do have one very short resolution to, after this one. And Emily, are you calling, are you calling the roll or is Tricia?
I believe that's Tricia.
Okay, thanks, Emily. So I killed, I killed another thirty-five seconds. Um, Tricia, please call the roll.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Croyle?
Yes.
Sean Eversley Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Elder, we're gonna need, Elder, we're gonna need an audio on that.
Oops, I'm sorry, yes.
Nicola Fave?
Epstein.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
The uh, motion passed. Pat Wazlo uh, is, was unable to be with us, but we did have a, had a quorum and we do have. Passage of uh, the certification of the election. Resolution uh, two point two, just to attend the Central New York School Boards Association Annual Dinner. Um, there are two people listed. My name is there. I have a conflict. I will not be attending. So it's just for Eldred. Uh, somebody wants to move that and um, second it and we'll call a roll and we'll be done.
I'll move the resolution to send Eldred to the Central New York School Boards Association Annual Dinner.
You guys can't, you can't let me go there by myself. You just, you can't.
I'm gonna be, I hope to be in Portugal, though I do not trust Tap Airlines to get me there, but I'm supposed to go.
Well.
Otherwise, I'd be with you. I like those dinners.
I will hold it down. But it won't be easy.
I move, I agenda item two point two, resolution for Eld.
Did I do that? You can.
I sec, I second the motion.
I seconded.
Oh, sorry, Chris seconded.
I withdraw on my last comment. Elder's gonna go twice, but uh, that's okay. So uh, Tricia, if you want to just, uh, we've got it, so just go ahead and call a roll. Please, Tricia, thank you.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Croyle?
Yes.
Sean Eversley Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris? You're muted.
I did it again, yes.
Nicola Fave? Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Thanks to the community for supporting this district one more time. Uh, and Dr. Brown, I believe you've got a. A budget that will uh, meet the needs of the kids for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and hopefully. Um, engage the staff that you need and keep this district moving forward. So we appreciate everyone's help tonight. Um, that's it. So we will close this special voting meeting at seven eighteen, well within our time limit for the day. And we'll uh, we'll see everybody next week. I believe there's a board meeting this week. Yes, right, yeah, correct, usual stuff. All right, so we'll see everybody next week. Thank you.